All right. And I will call to order the May 21st meeting, the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. This time I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. I'm joined today by Commissioners Schrader, Swayze, Coleman, and Kogil Rockwell as well for the signings of things. First item of business today is to approve the actions from the May 7th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. They have a motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort through the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we'll consider on consent and which will be discussed and which will be continued to another meeting. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is Minneapolis Convention Center. That is a vacation. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? Actually, that will be continued indefinitely, so if you're here for that, we'll consider that some other day. Item two is the Kraus-Anderson Block, RLS of 501 and 523 South 8th Street, 817 and 823 Fifth Avenue South, and 816 Portland Avenue. That is a registered land survey. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one will put that on consent. Item three is at 4322 through 4324 Lindale Avenue South, an expansion of a non-conforming use. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put item three on consent. Item four is the Kenan Norms Cooler Edition Resubmission at 4801 Chicago Avenue. It's an amendment to a conditional use permit. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put item four on consent. Item five is at 208 Oliver Avenue South. That is a rezoning. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put item five on consent. Item six is Freedom Works at 2900 Fremont Avenue North, 2912 Fremont Avenue North, 2929 Emerson Avenue North, 2950 Emerson Avenue North, 2911 and 2915 and 2917 Emerson Avenue North, conditional use permit for a supportive housing facility. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? See, no one will put item six on consent. Item seven is Lakeside Self-Storage at 434 Lakeside Avenue, site plan review for a self-storage facility. I know Commissioner Lupe Peer wanted to discuss that item, so we'll discuss item seven. Item eight is Minneapolis Impound Facility at 50 DuPont Avenue North and 100 Irving Avenue North. That application will be continued to the June 25th meeting. If anyone is here for that, we'll consider it on June 25th. Item nine is the Gray's Food Hall at 525 North 3rd Street, conditional use permit. While several applications for a new commercial building at that location, we'll discuss item nine, if anyone is here for that. Item 10 is the apartment on Essex East at 2628 Essex Street Southeast. Several applications for a new multifamily building. That application will be continued to the June 11th meeting, if anyone is here for that. Item 11 is the North Point Expansion at 1319 and 1349 Penn Avenue North, also 2210 Plymouth Avenue North. Several applications for expansion of that facility. We'll discuss item 11, if anyone is here for that. Item 12 is the Carmel Square Edition at 2910 Pillsbury Avenue, expansion of a non-conforming use. That item will be continued to the June 11th meeting as well, so we'll consider that then. Item 13 is the U-Haul Moving and Storage at Hiawatha at 4225 and 4251 Hiawatha Avenue. Several applications for a new self-storage facility. We'll discuss item 13, if anyone is here for that. Item 14 is the 1717 Central Avenue Apartments at 1717 Central Avenue Northeast. Several applications for a new mixed-use building at that location. That item will also be continued to June 11th, if anyone is here for that. We'll consider it on June 11th. Yes?
Correct. On item 14, we will not discuss that today. That's been continued to June 11th, so we'll consider it then. Yes. Moving along, item 15 is the Thriveant Corporate Office at 501 through 529 South 6th Street and 600 through 610 Portland Avenue South. Several applications for a new office building at that location. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 15? See, no one will put item 15 on consent. Item 16 is the 12th Street Apartments at 228 South 12th Street. That is a site plan review for a new apartment building, and that item will also be continued to the June 11th meeting, so we will consider it at that time. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 15 will be on consent. We'll discuss items 7, 9, 11, and 13. Item 1 will be continued indefinitely. Items 10, 12, 14, and 16 will be continued to June 11th, and item 8 will be continued to June 25th. Commissioners may have a motion. Commissioner Kronzer?
If you'd like to discuss item 6, we can. It's my understanding that the applicant had some concerns with one of the conditions, but has since agreed to that condition of approval, so that was okay with that being on consent. All right. So, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll consider our Committee of the Hall consent agenda. Vice President Lupe Peer, would you like to give us an update from the May 10th Committee of the Hall meeting? If not, I can just read through. Would you like to give us an update from Committee of the Hall? Otherwise, I can do that. Okay. At the Committee of the Hall meeting on May 10th, actually, we considered a number of items. Land sales at 2630 South 8th Street, 513 19th Avenue South, 3201 Bryant Avenue North, 1405 16th Avenue North, 2806 Park Avenue South. We also considered a location and design review for the office building and public service center for the city. Also, the 44th and Penn Avenue North redevelopment plan found that all of those items were consistent with the Minneapolis plan. They have a motion to approve the Committee of the Hall consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Committee of the Hall consent agenda is approved. Moving along, may I have a motion to continue item one indefinitely? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue items 10, 12, 14, and 16 to the June 11th meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Finally, may I have a motion to continue item eight to the June 25th meeting? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 15. One last call. Is anyone here for any of those items? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our four items for discussion. We'll start with item seven. Let's see here. Staff is Mr. Crandall.
Commissioner Lupe Peer, I understand you had some questions about the treatment of the blank walls on this project. I don't know if there's anything you wanted staff to focus on, or any particular questions you have.
Yeah, Peter, I had some concerns about the blank wall provision and the way that they were addressing that through two different types of basically block. And I know that in the past, in recent past, we approved a self-storage facility at Oak Lake and 7th where we required actual glazing, at least to a depth that would allow some sense of pedestrian scale, and also lighting along the exterior perimeter. So, I was just kind of wondering where the applicant was at with that, because I don't feel as though the solid mason new wall is appropriate, especially in this area right near the farmer's market.
Sure, yeah. So, staff identified the same issue with the original proposal. We recommended a condition of approval that the applicant utilize an enhanced landscaping treatment along that south wall to further mitigate the blank wall condition. There's a couple of recent examples that I looked at with regard to blank wall issues in... I'll have to pull it up here, sorry. Recently-approved self-storage facilities. One was along the riverfront at 1717 West River Road. In that case, we had a similar recommendation that the applicant implement enhanced landscaping to mitigate a blank wall condition. And then the example that you're referring to is at 701 7th Street North, and we did have the project implement some glazing. I took a little walk around the project in Google Maps just to see how that worked out, and I can actually probably call that up here. Basically, the implemented glazing has... So, you can kind of see... First of all, the site is slightly different because it has street frontage along three sides, and so the case that we're looking at tonight is... Has street frontage on the front of the block and on the rear of the block, so Lakeside Avenue and Border Avenue. The applicant has implemented some additional glazing, both in the new addition portion of the project and in the existing building. So, they're working to meet that condition there, and then the interior side lot line faces another industrially-zoned property and is not subject to the same window requirements as those facing a public street. In this case, we did, it looks like, have them implement some additional glazing on the upper floors, but you can see that right behind that is the actual storage facility, so it's a true sort of false glazing condition. And while it does, I think, provide some additional sense of kind of a pedestrian-scaled building and potentially some more characteristic use, it doesn't actually function as a window, and given that this facade wasn't actually facing a public street or onsite pathway or surface parking lot, we didn't feel like that would be quite as effective. So, I'm open to hearing ideas from the applicant or from the commission about potential ways of sort of further mitigating that blank wall condition, but staff felt that landscaping might be sufficient.
So, Peter, can you tell me, how close is the south facade of this building to its adjacent neighbor?
So, let's see. I don't have the exact measure on the site plan, but it is probably in here. I believe it's about five feet. I'm going to ask the applicant to confirm that for me, because I don't see it immediately available on the site plan. Additionally, it's important to know that immediately behind those, immediately behind that south wall is storage facilities, so there isn't like a circulation corridor there, which is what's happening on the front of the building, so you're actually looking into a space that's potentially occupied by people.
Yeah, I was just looking at the elevation for it, though, and it's kind of having a rhythm that's, you know, hinting that there may or may not be blocked up. I mean, whatever it was designed to look like, it just looks like a... I mean, at that point, it might as well be solid, because it's not fooling anybody, you know? I mean, if that makes any sense.
Sure, yeah.
So, and I worry about, like, from a pedestrian experience, walking to and from the farmer's market, what, I think it's probably five feet from the property line, but given the building next to it, you know, in my experience, you see, you know, at least the front, I don't know, game any feet, you know, 20 feet or whatever, and same on the back, to where you're getting the sense that it's a solid wall and not something that kind of feels inviting and as if you would want to walk by. So, I just had concerns that landscaping alone won't hide the fact that this is a, you know, immensely long, solid wall, and even something that hints at the fact that it might be more pedestrian-scale and friendly things such as windows that we made, the other storage place install, even though they just, you know, basically were display windows, at least it kind of gave a sense of more of a welcoming environment than a block wall.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, we've had a lot of experience with these types of projects recently, and it is a real challenge to meet the site plan review requirements. So, I did let the applicant know that there was a concern about that and asked that maybe they think about potential other solutions. I know they're here tonight, so we could hear from them potentially.
Super great. Love to hear from them, and then also, did they give any indication about whether they're willing to put a front door actually facing the street and not just their parking?
Yes, the applicant did indicate that they are okay with all other proposed conditions of approval.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And Commissioners, are there any other questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on this item, and if the applicant is here, we'd like to hear from you. Anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Oh, yes. Please come to the microphone and say your name.
Good evening. My name is Todd Jones. I'm with Jacobs Management, the applicant. 8096 Sir Culver Hopkins. I'm here with Jake Steen of Larkin Hoffman. I'd like to thank you for reviewing our site plan application tonight. We do appreciate staff's recommendation for approval with conditions, and we do agree to those conditions of approval. With respect to that south elevation, we can talk about that a little bit. Does this thing work here?
Yeah, you should be able to.
What do I do here? That's not the south elevation, but that's the front, and as staff indicated, I mean, we're putting a lot of resources into that front elevation of the existing building, a lot of glass, a lot of detail. We really thought that was an important elevation, so we kind of went all out on that. And then on the right side of the drawing is that's the south addition, I'll call it. But specifically with the south elevation, I don't know if anybody can zoom in on that. If they can, that'd be nice. You know, I heard the term "a blank wall," but first of all, what's been proposed initially is the first three feet of this is a rock-based block. Example of that is right here. Now, on top of that is a stone cap, which introduces kind of a horizontal element. Okay, on top of the cap, the main base of the wall face is a burnished block, like here. It's called Greek spice. I hope you guys can see this. So, we're trying to switch up the material and create some interest. And this, the burnished block not only provides a different lighter color, but a different texture. In addition to visually break up the wall, we're providing every 25 feet a total of nine of these pilasters. They will project out, giving it more depth, you know? So, the thought of just a long, flat wall, we're trying to break that up, and I guess 25 feet, because that's what the ordinance states we need to do, so we're trying to accommodate that. They'll be rock-faced, and again, we'll have stone caps on top of that to help those pop out a little more. Much of this site elevation, you know, will not have view from the public areas, because there is a industrial building approximately 25 feet from the south wall. This is what I call the south addition to the industrial wall. So, much of it, you know, we're looking at it straight on, the whole thing. There's presently no view like that. Now, we did catch wind that, you know, that someone had brought up interest about the south elevation, and in the spirit of it all, we were proposing to come forward with a few more things. So, I got with my guys, and I said, "Well, guys, we heard there might be concern about the south elevation, you know, this blank wall concept. What can we do?" So, first of all, we've added landscape along there, and that was at the recommendation of staff, and we, that's a condition, we've agreed to do that. In addition, we added this 12-inch horizontal metal band across there, and that kind of, that band and in that color ties in with what we've got going on the other elevations, some of these horizontal bands. And in addition, between all these columns, we've added some square elements, so 2'8" by 2'8", different color, different texture, different blocks of it. So, we've really have made an effort here to do everything we can to address any concerns that this is a blank wall. In our opinion, there's an awful lot going on here. If you have other suggestions, we're all open, but there's a lot of detail going on here, and please understand, we've come forward with our best effort to try to address concerns.
All right. Commissioner Lupe Peer?
Yeah, so I do appreciate the modifications and the cap matching and tablature and all that. I'm wondering, though, 25 feet still is quite the view angle for people from north coming to and from the farmer's market, and I'm wondering if maybe you would consider even just modifying the first bay closest to the street, that first 25-foot section, to have some glazing, whether real or not, just to give it a sense of scale that ties into what you've done on the west facade?
You know, is that off of the west elevation?
Mm-hmm. Like, to turn the corner, the southwest corner, just that first bay.
So, that would be adding a glazing element in this area here?
Yep. That would be it.
You would be good then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We would agree to do that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if there are any other speakers on this item. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the site plan review. Commissioner Lupe Peer, if you had some questions, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I'd like to remove approval of site plan review for Lakeside Self-Storage at 434 Lakeside Avenue with an added condition that the applicant shall modify the westernmost bay of the south elevation, include a bank of windows, and we'll work with staff to do so.
All right. We have a motion to approve the site plan review with an eighth condition to modify the westernmost bay and work with staff to add windows. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Peer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
8-0.
That motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item seven. Our next item for discussion is item nine, and staff is Ms. Wallace.
Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you is at 525 3rd Street North. The applicant has requested to discuss this project as they have concerns with one of the conditions of approval, so I will just go quickly through what the project is. This site was originally included as a PUD with the bookman stacks and lofts, so that is why. There is an amendment to the PUD to establish this new food hall that's proposed. Here is the site and a little bit more context. So, the PUD site includes the lofts and stacks, and then the highlighted red portion is where the proposed project will go. And you can see in the photo that the concrete area is the roof of an underground parking garage. The new building is supposed to be built on top of that structure. So, the applications required are the amendment to the CUP, a variance to reduce the minimum FAR from 2 to .78, and site plan review. This is the site plan of the site, so you can see it's set back pretty far from 5th Avenue North. And floor plans, a little unclear, second floor. Here are a couple of renderings of the proposed building. It's a two-story building with a large outdoor seating area and second-story patio. So, the conditional use permit, I already covered that a bit, and the variance is required due to the minimum FAR requirement in B4N. The site has certain constraints, being part of the master declaration of bookman lofts. It's limited to 40 feet in height and 23,500 square feet in gross floor area. There are also poor soil conditions at the site that would require extensive engineering to overcome, which is why the building is supposed to be built on the underground ramp. So, site plan review, staff identified a number of standards requiring alternative compliance, including building placement due to that large setback from 5th, visual interest, there are a number of blank walls on the northwest and east elevations, exterior materials durability. The north elevation has a larger quantity of metal panel than our standards would allow, the number of exterior materials, which we will get into in a moment, and windows. Some issues with the east elevation is not meeting the window requirement. And so, staff has recommended granting alternative compliance for the building placement that's really driven by the soil conditions on the site, visual interest on the north and east. There are some interesting conditions where the east elevation is actually shielded from the public view by the entrance to that underground parking ramp, so there really isn't the ability to put windows there. And the north elevation is really facing like internal circulation and has a lot of mechanical equipment. Staff had recommended conditions of approval requiring the project to eliminate blank walls on the second floor of the west elevation that exceeds 25 feet, and then revising the exterior materials on the north to comply with the durability standards, and on the east to be revised to not have more than three building materials on one elevation. And this is the... The applicant had concerns with condition 11, which is the condition about revising elevations that have not more than three materials on any one. This is the elevation in question, so their initial submittal, they had shown, I think, six building materials, and we had talked about that, and they revised it to the resubmitted one that's in the packet, which still has, I think, five exterior building materials. And so, the applicant had hoped that the smaller quantity of core 10 and the wood panel would count as an exit material, but we just evaluate the full quantity of materials on the elevation. So, staff has recommended approval with the reference conditions, and the applicant would like to speak about the 11th condition.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of... If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item.
And so the applicant had hoped that the smaller quantity of core ten and the wood panel would count as an exit material, but we just evaluate the full quantity of materials on the elevation. So staff has recommended approval with the reference conditions, and the applicant would like to speak about the 11th condition.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'll have the applicant speak first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Ted Kistner, I'm with ESG Architects. Thanks for doing this today. Just use the arrows to go back. So, we just have one issue with item number 11 on your guys' list, and that's the number of materials just on the east elevation. So the east elevation is kind of our one main, main elevation to the public, it's kind of, the public touches it the most. And the two spaces that the public actually, sure, yeah, the two spaces that the public touches the most are the front entry and the service bar. The front entry is right off of Fourth Street, and we kind of envision that as something, or kind of like a core ten box, so kind of an upgraded material from our other three main materials that the public actually comes in contact with. And then our second ask was for the service bar, which is just to the right of that, and that is, we're envisioning some type of wood paneling. Again, it's another upgraded material, has higher quality to it, and it comes in contact with the public more than any of the other, other materials on the project. Each of these material changes that we're asking for comes with a distinctive change in massing, so it alone is its own little box of a different material, and we think it just fits nicely within this east facade, which will have most of the, the excitement and the action around it.
And are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can see if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this item. Yes, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I'm David O'Hara. I live at 345 Sixth Avenue North. My condo is in the background there, I'm in Bookman Stacks. I think this is a terrific development, but I have one concern. If you move one past this around to the side that's facing Bookman Stacks, yeah, right there, there is a fence which delineates this development from a private courtyard, and this, in the architect's drawings, there's an opening in the fence which allows access to this private courtyard. And I'm concerned about potential pedestrian traffic and customers, you know, seeing this lawn and coming out and using it. It really is a private courtyard. And given that the public space is primarily on Fourth Avenue on the east side of the building, I would ask you to consider closing this fence, just to really reduce the access to the private courtyard.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that's fine to respond. I, I will add, you know, that, that gets into kind of a micro-level detail beyond our site plan approval, so I probably just encourage you to maybe have a conversation outside, or outside of this meeting to work out a solution on that. All right. Yeah, if you, if you do have a response that, right now, that's fine.
I can talk to them afterwards.
Okay.
We've actually already worked it through, so I'll just explain to them what we're doing, and...
All right. Okay. Sounds good. Are there any other questions of, well, I guess we can see if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this item first, and seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would anyone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I'm looking at A, to approve the, item A, to approve the conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit to amend the PUD one stated condition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
8-0.
Motion carries. Commissioner Cronzer?
Yes, I make a motion to approve a variance to reduce the floor area ratio from 2.0 to .78.
We have a motion to approve item B, the FAR variance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. Item C, Commissioner Cronzer?
Sure. Yeah, I have a motion to approve the site plan with the 11 stated conditions with a modification to number 11, striking what's written and say, "The building shall be built per the elevation submitted in the packet."
All right. So we have a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review, with the modification to condition 11, striking the language that is proposed, and instead saying that the exterior materials shall be provided as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Well, I can just say, I think it's a fine-looking building, that one extra material on the east is really, probably enhances the experience of, of the building and the public.
And Commissioner Lupe here?
Yeah, I concur. I think part of the reason that's driving the quantity of materials as well is that some of the materials on other facades are truly wrapping that, the massing of certain elements, so rather than looking all fakey and pasted on one side, it's kind of completing a corner, and then there's like, for example, the core ten kind of being the background, drawing the two together. So I think it's, because it's being done well, it's actually what's driving the need for this. So I concur, and we'll be supporting the motion.
Right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine. Our next item for discussion is item 11. Staff is Ms....
Item number 11 is for the North Point, the Wallace Clinic, located at 1319, 1349 Penn Avenue North and 2210 Plymouth Avenue North. The existing property encompasses a full block found by Plymouth Avenue North, 14th Avenue North on the north and south, Queen Avenue North on the west, and Penn Avenue North on the east. As you can see in this aerial photograph, aerial photo, north would be towards the right. We see the existing Estes Funeral Home at the south end of the site. Last year, the City Planning Commission approved the new Estes building located at the southeast corner of the Penn and Plymouth intersection, and that is near substantial completion at this point. Moving Estes was important for the North Point expansion to allow for additions on the north and south side of the existing building shown at the center. So, as far as proposed demolitions, the Estes Funeral Home would come down and then North Point Inc. to allow for additions again on the north and the south. The applicant has requested several variances in a site plan review application. One of those variances has been withdrawn, and that was of the Plaza standards. The applicant will be able to meet that, those requirements, and therefore, that application has been withdrawn. The site is unique in that it has three front yard setback requirements along Queen, Plymouth, and Penn avenues, and a corner side yard setback required along Penn Avenue North. So the majority of the variances requested have to do with the location of certain elements of the proposed parking areas on the north and the south side, and then the loading area and the courtyard spaces on the east and the west sides. Here's the proposed landscaping plan, and that really kind of draws the whole site together, and I'll just kind of walk you through it real quick. So from Plymouth Avenue, additions again would be located approximately here and here. The proposed use is a community center, which is generally consistent with the operations today, provide medical and dental clinics, as well as office spaces and mental health clinics. The food shelf will be moving from this existing building that is located approximately here to this portion of the building. The majority of the parking would be located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Penn and Plymouth at the new Thor P3 project. There is also an A BRT line that has been approved, and a stop will be just south of the building along Penn. So the majority of traffic on foot or on transit will come to this point of intersection. This is an arcade where the second level is above. The main entrance of the building would be located here. This site plan allows for drop-off of patients and people utilizing the facility. There's some short-term parking, as well as some handicap-accessible parking located here in the south parking lot. In the north parking lot, we see a curb cut off of 14th Avenue. There's some loading here, that's to accommodate the users of the building and primarily the food shelf. We have some maneuvering space for the loading area, and then a parking lot here at the north that's primarily intended for the food shelf clientele. Staff analyzed the proposed variances, and I'll talk about the recommendations after the alternative compliance. First, as far as building placement, generally speaking, staff would prefer that the location of the building be located right up to the setbacks at the corner of Penn and Plymouth, being the most prominent corner of the entire project, and that being the location where we anticipate the largest amount of pedestrian traffic either arriving via car and parking in the ramp, or taking one of the available transit routes south of the site. So staff is recommending that the, or that the planning commission not grant alternative compliance and require that the building be located at the first floor up to the corner. As I mentioned before, the upper floor above is located to the corner, but the first floor is not. It's generally more of an arcade experience that you would walk underneath that second floor. Additionally, that would provide a better street wall, we feel, by providing the building located 15 feet from Penn and Plymouth at that intersection. The onsite parking based on the preservation of the existing building and additions at north and south would require that the parking lots be located on the periphery or in the front yards or corner side yards, and those variances have been requested, and where staff is recommending denial of both of those variances. Additionally, staff finds that if we're able to get more of a corner presence, we would be able to get additional principal entrances at or near the corner of Penn and Plymouth. There's an additional series of entrances at the north end of the site. Kind of the main entrance, if you will, is through a vestibule that's located approximately here. Just beyond that vestibule is an information and security desk, similar to it is on the south, where it kind of controls and is, allows for finding for users of the site. If using the food shelf, there is internal circulation with a door that exits back out towards the parking lot facing north. Staff identified an opportunity on the floor plan to potentially move at least one of the entrances where it's currently facing north as an exit through the food shelf, to potentially face, I'm sorry, that's not facing north, facing west, to instead face east towards Penn Avenue by essentially flipping these two spaces. Here's another diagram, just again identifying the two principal entrances at the north and south ends of the, of the project, and kind of that pedestrian path, if you will, if you're not utilizing either the on-street parking spaces at the north or the south end of the site. For building walls, we identified three primary locations where there were blank uninterrupted walls of 25 feet where staff, for the proposed addition, there's some that are there for the existing building, but that's outside of the requirements of the city to require alteration of those existing buildings. So where in the addition, staff is asking for either a change of material, recess of projection, something to break up those blank walls, and the applicant thought that they could do that. Then with the even distribution of windows, essentially by breaking up those walls, we felt like what couldn't be accommodated through windows should be approved. For landscape yards, because of the site and the proximity of those parking areas to the, to the front yard setbacks and corner side yard setbacks, that seven-foot landscape yard is not prevalent in any of those required areas. So staff is asking that the planning commission deny the alternative compliance and require that the applicant provide those seven feet of landscape yards, and I'll just kind of walk through where those might be located. So staff would expect a seven-foot landscape yard adjacent to Queen, along Plymouth Avenue here, along the loading area here, along 14th for the full, very adjacent to the loading, and then also adjacent to the parking, and then 15-foot from here, because this is a front yard setback along Penn. With that additional landscape yard, where some places, it is as close as 2 feet 9 inches for what's provided onsite, staff feels that the applicant would then be able to provide some parking lot screening through a combination of vegetation and screening offense, and then also would be able to provide that minimum of one tree per 25 feet of parking lot front edge. So the applicant has concurred with staff recommendation on variance A, to deny the front yard setback along Penn Avenue North. They believe that they would be able to provide that 15-foot setback and that landscape yard there. For variance B, for the corner side yard along north 14th Avenue, they are asking that the planning commission approve that application. I can just kind of zoom in again. So you can see here at its closest corner, it's 4 feet 8 inches. Up here on, towards the western part of the north parking lot, it's 5'5". Staff found an opportunity to reduce this drive aisle by 2 feet, so that would get us to 6'8", and this walkway by another 1 foot 4 inches, so that would get us the 8 feet required along the corner side yard. So staff felt as though with minimal alteration to the existing parking lot layout and that walkway, that the applicant could meet that minimum corner side yard setback. The applicant isn't, agrees with the front yard setback variance for C along Queen Avenue North, including those stated conditions of approval. For variance D, and then also for variance E, I'll just take those together. Those have to do with the location of the south parking lot, and the ability to provide landscape yard here, as well as reducing the number of parking stalls located within that south parking lot. So essentially, staff's recommendation is to allow for some drop-off spaces, approximately 8 to queue up here, that also allows for kind of a pass-around lane, as you can see here. These parking stalls located at the center of the south parking lot exceed the, the minimum depth of 18 feet by 4 feet 6 inches. So staff felt as though there was an opportunity to provide landscaping here, essentially tighten up some of this space to provide more drive aisle to allow for the turning movements that are required. The applicant provided this plan... The applicant provided this plan to show. Sorry, just a moment. The applicant provided a maneuvering plan showing a metro mobility vehicle as being the vehicle that would be the most frequent and the largest size utilizing the south parking lot in order to allow for drop offs to occur. Again, staff felt as though the the turning movements were such that we could allow for a greater landscape yard here and create more of a driveway condition than a drive aisle by not allowing these parking stalls to pull through. And so in essence, what staff is really recommending is seven feet of landscaping here. And then reducing these two parking stalls. That's really kind of at its most basic as far as a design. And so we've demonstrated that. Not able to turn the page right now, but essentially this is looking south where we could get more of a landscape yard here. And again, allow for the drives necessary and then parking still located here. Staff was not specific in that particular condition of approval where we said eight off-street parking spaces, four short term, and then just four general parking spaces. Because we didn't want to create a situation where we said for accessible spaces where they really needed five or six. So we would allow the applicant flexibility to actually provide what is remaining. So in essence, again, the the staff recommendation is really to eliminate those two parking stalls located at the southwest corner of the site and just kind of create a better efficiency of of space in that south parking lot to really get that landscape yard along Plymouth Avenue North, which again is a front yard setback. With that, I can take any questions.
Right, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
Shannon, so on the on the last one you were just talking about. variance D. So the variance is to reduce the setback from fifteen feet to two feet, six inches. What I think I heard you saying is is not to wholly deny that, but instead to amend that. Staff's recommendation is to amend that from two feet, six inches to. Was it seven feet?
So in this case, what staff is asking is for a driveway instead of a drive aisle. And therefore that is a permitted obstruction in the front yard setback. So it would be technically a denial of the variance and it would just again create more efficiency and make this really kind of a one-way condition through the site.
Got it. So we've got some legal noodling happening here. Cool. Got it.
Any further questions of staff? Hearing done, I'll open the public hearing on this item and I'll ask the applicant to speak first and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rebecca Padilla and I'm a senior planner and architect for Hennepin County Facility Services. The applicant, this project grew out of North Point conversations dating back to two thousand and six. So there've been a lot of iterations of this project and the evolution of the project originated, this this project originated in two thousand and fourteen as a community-based recommendation from the North Point Community Board and was approved to was endorsed to move forward by Hennepin County Board in twenty in twenty fifteen. So since then, we've been going through a very extensive programming and pre-design effort. And schematic design was a year long. We finished that and it was approved by the county board and the community board February sixth of this year. So I guess that's to say, give you a little history and to say that this this evolution of the project is very refined and it really reflects the the services provided by North Point Health and Wellness Center. We understand what's there because all this project is doing is expanding the space to accommodate the programs that are very successful. Medical and human services programs. So that's the purpose of it and I wanted to also mention that throughout this process, the project team has routinely been meeting with the neighborhood. And people in the community are very well apprised of what we're doing. And at this point, I wanted to introduce Stella Whitney West and she'll speak. She's the CEO of North Point.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I am not an architect. So I couldn't tell you what the difference between six feet and six inches. But what I can tell you is about how our patients, community and our staff use our facility. I know about patient flows. I know about staff workflows and I know about this project. We've been working on this project for eleven years or more and I have been the CEO the entire eleven years. North Point Health and Wellness Center has been in North Minneapolis for fifty years. We're celebrating fifty years in this location. And we provide medical, dental, behavioral health. We have onsite pharmacy, laboratory, radiology. We have chemical dependency treatment programs. We have a food shelf, which is the largest food shelf in the city. Probably in the state. We also provide employment services, housing, youth prevention, empowerment programs. And also for co-parenting support for families. We have a number of support groups for men and women and youth that are experiencing domestic violence, trauma and reentry in juvenile probation. We are the largest community health center in Minneapolis in Hennepin County. We serve over twenty-eight thousand five hundred patients annually with over a hundred nine thousand visits. Since two thousand and six, our patients have increased over sixty-one percent. And our visits have increased over eighty-six percent, which is why this expansion is so needed. We also have clinics and seven schools in the city of Minneapolis. And we have two satellite sites, one at the McCorvey Senior Center and one at eight hundred West Broadway. That is in partnership with the Minneapolis Public Schools and the Minnesota Workforce Center. As you may or may not know, we are often, we are also governed by a community board that is in partnership with Hennepin County. Seventy-seven percent of our board members are patients. We're only required to have fifty-one percent, but we went overboard. Seventy percent of our board members live in our service area predominantly North Minneapolis. Fifty-one percent of our patients are African-American, twenty-seven percent are Latino and twelve percent are Southeast Asian. Our mission is to create a healthier community and we incorporate the social determinants of health into our practice, which means we do as much of our health intervention in the communities outside of our clinic walls as much as we do inside our clinic walls. We believe it's important to be where people live, work and play. So our campus design represents how we work with the community to achieve health outcomes. Many of our health outcomes have exceeded state and national averages. And for the last three years, we have been recognized nationally for our quality. Our campus design, as Rebecca mentioned, represents years of work and a number of staff and volunteer work groups as well as a number of patient and community listening sessions. So in terms of the specific recommendations from the from the staff, I just want to speak to item number B, D and E and then item G, number six. So first of all, our north parking area not only serves our food shelf, but is also an area that we have a number of our community events. You're seeing now is one of our major bike rides that is coordinated through the major Taylor Cycling. It is also going to be the short-term parking for our pharmacy. Our pharmacy does a number of prescriptions equal to a large CVS, over six hundred and fifty prescriptions daily. We also need that parking space because many of our families, they utilize the food shelf. Need that extra space for the volunteers to assist them with bringing out their food to their cars or their transportation. Many of the families have children, so we wanted to make sure that the space is ample enough for safety. Also, in terms of the front of our clinic where there's a staff recommendation for the variance that we've asked for. I like to say that we have a number of patients that not only use metro mobility, but also ride our patient vans and these are large six, I mean fifteen passenger vans. And so we need that space for those vans to pull up. We are also going to be providing valet parking. Because we want to make sure that our patients and clients utilize the parking ramp and reduce parking in the residential neighborhoods. So we believe that if we are able to provide that valet parking and having that space there. That will encourage and will get a lot of those cars, which is our goal for the parking ramp off of the street. In terms of item number G. In terms of that main entrance facing the north parking lot, we think it's important that it face the north parking lot and not Penn. Again, this makes it convenient for our patients, our customers and our volunteers. And again, that entrance is also used by our pharmacy patients as well. So again, we've used a very extensive inclusive process with to engage our staff, our clients, our patients, the community in this design. So I hope that you accept our application and our recommendations. And now I'm going to introduce a real architect, Mr. Bill Hickey with Collaborative Design.
And before you leave the microphone, I think Commissioner Lupe Peer has a question for you.
Hi, so I had a question about the north parking lot where the entrance. You just said you prefer not facing Penn, but to face west to get to the north parking lot. Can you explain, is that just an exit or is it also the entrance and the exit to get in?
It is the entrance and the exit.
And then the the garden landscaped area that is between that the proposed staff entrance and Penn. Can you talk a little bit about the purpose of that and and why it would not be good to exit onto or enter through that?
For for Penn Avenue? Because what one of the main is that it doesn't allow enough space. Because we want most of our customers that are coming in, that space in that parking area allows them to park their short term in order to load their food shelf items as opposed to they wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, it would and it will also increase that walking if they were to exit on the Penn Avenue side.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Any other questions?
Doesn't look like we have any other questions at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Bill Hickey, as Stella mentioned, with Collaborative Design Group, one twenty-five Main Street, Southeast. Just to quickly expand on on Stella's comment. Many of the things that we're doing with the site and with the building are predicated on that existing building that we have to keep in operation, keep functioning. And in the end, makes sense of as we build the new building. So the north entry is the beginning of our internal main street, which builds on the existing clinic's central circulation area. So we're expanding off of that. The food shelf, actually there are two doors and it can be a bit confusing. When we're talking to entrance, that's the main entry to both the main street and to the food shelf. The food shelf does have a one-way circulation path through it. So when a patron comes out with their their goods, they come out a door under the same canopy that they entered into, but it is physically a separate door. It's the same location. So just to clarify that. I do also want to expand a little bit on how the nature of our patients and clients affects how we've made some of these site judgments. A high, high percentage of the clients and patients at North Point are children. You know what happens with kids in parking lots, especially if they're sick or the parents are struggling with one sibling and not the other. So reducing circulation and lanes to minimums is a calculated risk. We feel that we we need to be somewhat more than minimum generous with circulation as a as a safety thing, as a convenience thing. Parents have to get doors open, elderly folks have walkers and things to deal with. So we are recognized, we are above the minimum for some of these dimensions, but we want to be able to provide a a comfortable experience for for users coming in and out. Excuse me. The the main points I wanted to talk about relate to items, I think it's four and five in the staff staff comments. There's a cord on that. The 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 main entry here, this is the first floor plan. You can see the covered arcade coming in. And the internal main street runs north, south here with the existing building in the center. And again, building on that as our circulation north, south path. We went through over the years, any number of options for the building on the site. We've we've had iterations of driveways, many different options, trying to find the right way. Whether it was a one-way pull-off or the present loop. Trying to balance all these things. Some of the things that we just can't change. The the first item is the existing building floor plan, first floor that we have to match is about three and a half, four feet above the level of the intersection sidewalk at the intersection of Penn and Plymouth. So to step into the building at that point, we would actually be half a floor down. That brings with it some limitations, obviously for logistics and there's the cost of getting people up and down and what that does for space, but it also would bring people in remote from that existing central spine where we need to move people up and down or through the building, I should say. We recognize that that it is important to claim the corner architecturally and to build, we think, a a strong presence out at the corner. This is a view as as you step onto the sidewalk at the corner. Little further back. It's a strong architectural move. It brings people under shelter, but it allows us to do the a graceful ramp and to to sweep people up, sweep people up to the front door. It does allow us to provide a sheltered area. We have routinely many clients lined up before opening and this is a way to provide that shelter. We also do note that Plymouth Avenue is maybe unique, but the typology up and down is of larger buildings with central entrances, Urban League, Urock, Fourth Precinct, Estes Now. Even the multifamily housing have mid-block approaches. So we feel we're consistent in that regard. The corner entry being more of a retail approach. It's again, we're we're stuck with the option because of the the floor changes, but we we think it's an appropriate and a graceful graceful way to adjust these things. Those are the main points I wanted to cover. Do you have any? Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Hi. So I just wanted to quick go through some of the items that Shannon went through and get your take.
Sure.
So I believe she had some concerns about the side yard setback, or the corner side yard setback on Long 14th for the parking lot. And she recommended narrowing the drive aisle between the two, the double-headed corridor, and then also narrowing the sidewalk. Can you, not the sidewalk, but the sidewalk that's adjacent to your building as a means of accommodating that setback? Can you talk a little about those two things and whether or not either or both of those are possible?
The narrowing of the driveway, again, gets to the nature of the transaction there, the clients, the doors being open for groceries, the carts, the children. We're squeezing that down. We do struggle with all of these being called parking areas because they are dual-purpose for us. This is a festival area. We have a lot of events that will happen there. So in a weird sort of way, you know, these are just from some of the last events at North Point. We're taking away from people if we devote land to the passive landscaping along the boundary and out of the plaza area. And so we're trying to find that balance. We do recognize it's important to have the screening and the edge, but we feel that the better use is to put this where people can use it.
And I know that the variance request is for four foot eight inches to allow, but that's from the property line. Do you know what the actual dimension is from the parking lot to the public sidewalk itself, what the overall landscape area would be? Since it appears to be some...
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. It's about, about six feet. Do you have it?
I'm just curious if we approached the...
I should also mention, all of these, if you're familiar with the present North Point, there's a chain link fence that goes away with all of this. We are getting rid of our fence.
So it would be, just looking at it, about eight feet, it looks like, at the westernmost edge, and probably closer to seven and a half, at the easternmost edge.
Thanks, Shannon. And then, since we're on that kind of area of the plan, if we can maybe zoom out a little, could you just show on the plan the circulation for, you mentioned the one-way going in, going out. I think I understood it, that it enters facing south and then you exit facing north under the same canopy, but I'm not sure, since it, some of the plans don't show the access points, if you could highlight that a little bit?
Sure. This is the location for the main north-south spine entry. A patron coming to the food shelf comes in, there's a canopy over this area, and then access to the food shelf is inside and the route is through and then out here, again under the canopy and in the general waiting area for pickup.
Okay. And then, moving on to the setback along Plymouth Avenue, from 15 feet to two foot six for the south parking area, can you specifically talk about that a little bit?
You can sort of see this little shoulder, that's the telltale for the radius of the metro mobility buses. Narrowing these spots, or these aisles, rather, the reason we have not done that is the frontage along the sidewalk will have valets, parkers, taxis, other vans and things there. And we have to be able to keep a circulation lane through there. It will be a one-way loop. The staging areas in the middle are just for valet only. So there's really no parking other than the handicap spots. The corner spot, for instance, is one of the North Point vans and those sorts of things.
So are you saying that the 22-foot-six inch dimension is actually driven by the turning radius and not by the parking length of a vehicle that's in the center?
It's the turning, correct. This is happenstance.
Okay.
We need to fit those 15-passenger vans, but that can be done in 20-foot.
Okay.
But they, we also don't want backing traffic there, again, because of the kids and that nature.
And then staff's recommendation to remove the southwestern two most parking spaces. Can you talk about why there's a need for that many?
Those are the staging areas for the North Point vans, the 15-passenger ones that we've mentioned.
Right. And then the only other thing I think any questions on were, the comments you made were in regard to the site plan, item G, numbers four and five, that you talked about first, correct?
Correct. That's about the entrance...
The entrance along Penn, okay.
Having the arcade approach.
So you're fine with the other conditions of the site planner view, but just those two specific numbers that you wanted to address?
Let me, well, let me, item six, that's the food shelf entry that Stella had mentioned. Let me go through. In item G, numbers one, two, and three are acceptable. Four, five, and six, we do disagree with. Number seven, we accept that. And to clarify, the blank wall is actually part of that plaza and will be used for art and activity and things, so no problem there. Let's see, eight, eight because it's sort of redundant with these other comments.
So it depends on how they're...
Nine and 10 are acceptable.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker? Yeah, Commissioner Crum.
For that south parking drop-off area, have you looked at ever rotating that 90 degrees and pushing it closer to Queen to allow the building to come closer to Plymouth and reducing that impact along Broad Plymouth?
No, I'm sorry. You're saying reverse this and put that here? Not following. This way?
Yes.
This is, this corner is the existing building, so we're constrained in that depth. We can't actually get the necessary depth in there. We have squeezed the new building as much as feasible in this dimension just to accommodate this. When we started, it had been a...
That must be 100 feet from the front of the existing building to the sidewalk on Plymouth.
It's close. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Any other questions? If there are none, I don't know if the applicant has anything else to add. If not, we can see if there are any other speakers on this item. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marquisha Robinson, and I just had a couple of concerns about the parking lot across the street there. Our property is actually on this side of 14th, and so I wanted to know what the plans are for that parking lot because, as they say, they do do a lot of great work for the community. And so when they do have their events and things, since my property is right there on the corner, like, it limits my parking for family and guests and things. And so I just want to know, I did hear her say something about the reducing the residential parkings over there, so there won't be that. So I'm hoping that that is the case, but I just kind of want to know what the plan is for this parking lot over here, if that's still going to be used for like overflow parking or for the staff or whatnot.
All right. Yeah, we can ask the applicant what their plans are for that parking lot.
You're talking about the lot here, east of Penn. Long-term, that is, it's not going to change from parking. The discussion is, should the county dispose of it? Staff and patient parking will be exclusively in Thor. The only onsite parking in the present lot will be for these short-term uses or the valet sort of use. It's been a commitment with the neighbors to try to get staff and patients out of the neighborhood streets and into these defined spots. So that by itself isn't changing, but it should make a difference.
All right. Thanks. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? As you know, and I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have several applications before us, a total of seven. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start off the discussion with Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Well, I can start with some of these. I'm going to move staff recommendation for variance A to decrease the front yard setback along Penn from 15 to 13, eight foot eight, to deny it because it sounded as though that wasn't something that was being contested either way regardless, so I'm going to move staff recommendation.
All right. We have a motion and a second to deny variance A for the front yard setback along Penn. Is there any discussion? If there is none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
I am going to modify variance B, which is to decrease the corner side yard setback along 14th Avenue. Staff recommendation was to deny the variance from eight feet to four foot eight, excuse me, but I, in doing so, by decreasing the drive aisle and also through reducing the pedestrian sidewalk adjacent to the building. And I think that I would like to modify that to, I think it's reasonable to expect that a minor reduction could be made to those things. I think, though, that given the heavy pedestrian use of that, it seems reasonable to me to allow it to be varied somewhat. So I would like to change it to approve the variance, reduce it from eight foot to five foot eight inches. And where they make up that foot is up to them.
All right. So we have a motion to approve variance B to decrease corner yard setback along 14th Avenue from eight feet to five feet eight inches to allow for the north parking area. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Shannon, can you tell us what that leaves, I'm sorry, my drawings are so tiny, what that leaves us with for landscaping? Five feet eight inches on the south and then, and then would increase in the north, right?
It depends on how it's configured. I don't know that it would necessarily have to increase more than three inches up here, but it would be five eight, which would give you about seven feet to the sidewalk.
Right, yeah. I think the landscape finished like to a general pedestrian, it would still appear to be what our intention is.
Right.
Because they would landscape the public right-of-way, I've assumed, to the sidewalk, you want to stop at your property line and have a foot plus something of nothing, at least I hope.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve variance B to allow for a corner yard setback of five feet eight inches rather than eight feet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Next, we have variance C. Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
For the interruption, because this was a denial and not just an alternative recommendation, we will need findings for variance B, for particularly findings one and two, please.
Yes, that's good. Thanks for that reminder. And Commissioner Lupe Pierre, you could take a stab at that, or if you'd like a minute, we can move on to one of the other applications.
I think that what they're proposing is a reasonable use and that keeps with the spirit and intent, especially given that the public realm will still meet the intention of the original requirement. And I believe some of it is due to, it won't be injurious to the use or enjoyment of the public right-of-way or the injurious to health, safety, welfare of the general public, from I'm trying to think about the first one.
And I think on that one, because there will be, there will remain sufficient space for landscape screening.
And I might add, on the practical difficulties, this is a reuse and modification of an existing building, so therefore there are some site constraints just associated with that in general. All right, so I think we have findings addressing those three areas. Are you moving along variance C? Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
I'll move staff recommendation on variance C to decrease the front yard setback along Queen Avenue.
Motion to approve variance C. Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. And Commissioner Lupe Pierre. We can have someone else make a motion too.
Okay, I'll take this one. I'm going to move approval of the variance, reduce the front side yard, or the front yard setback along Penn Avenue. So in other words, I'm flipping it, and I'm going to cite the practical difficulties as being the existing footprint of the building. And I recall during committee the whole, having to look at movement through the site and especially through the entry sequence, and it seemed to be really well-programmed for all the needs they had to address in that space without making it feel as cavernous as it currently feels when you enter the building. I think it's a much-needed change, and it's going to feel much more welcoming and a lot less like you're funneling people into a space this way. So I, as much as I love more landscaping along there, I can see where the turning radius is highly driving this two-foot-six dimension, and I'm pleased to see the amount of landscaping that's being put in there to make up for it.
All right. So we have a motion to approve variance D. Is there a second? Second, a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think Commissioner Lupe Pierre outlined the findings. Did that seem adequate? Okay, good. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
No.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
No.
And Rockwell?
No.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
It's four to three.
All right. That motion carries. Next, variance E. Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
I'll move approval of variance E.
We have a motion to approve variance E. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Rockwell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
That motion carries. And variance F, may have a motion to return that variance of the plaza standard.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second? And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Finally, item G, the...
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Finally, item G, the site plan review. Commissioner Lupe here, would you like to take a stab at that?
Really, but okay. I am going to move staff recommendation on site plan review, striking numbers. Let's see, four, well, it seems like four, five, six, and eight all deal with, four, five, and six that do with the location of the entry far from the corner and the setback. And I, I think that the practical difficulties of, not that it's a variance, but I think that the fact that they have to match the existing floor plate height and that it is a great grade change, that explains why it's as far away as it is, and also just works for the programming of the building. And, and it still has a welcoming sense of entry from the corner that accommodates public transit, so I'm happy for that. And as for eight, I think that I don't know how to word that to accommodate the variances we approved earlier, so I'm, I'm hoping that staff can, do I just strike it, or do I have to somehow wordsmith this to? Yeah, let's just strike condition eight as well.
So we have a motion to approve item G, the site plan review, removing conditions four, five, six, and eight. Is there a second? We have a second. There is no second. That motion fails. Would someone like to make an alternate motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation on item G, site plan review, striking item six. I can explain that if I have a second.
All right, we now have a motion to approve item G, the site plan review, removing condition six. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell, then Commissioner Lupe here.
I just have a quick question. Is he also striking eight since that contradicts what we approved earlier with the variances?
Oh, yes, we should strike eight.
That's our only question.
Okay, so we'll have, have a motion to approve item G, striking conditions six and eight. Commissioner Rockwell.
If I could just interrupt, excuse me, that, that, the expectation is that there will be landscaping between the parking lots and public sidewalks. It just won't be seven feet, just to
Right.
make that clear.
So, so perhaps, perhaps I'll look forward, amending item eight to have dimensions consistent with the variances approved earlier.
Yeah.
All right, so the motion then is, motion to approve, striking condition six and modifying condition eight, that landscape yards, that landscaping is provided in
At least seven feet.
Yards.
Amending that.
Right. All right. Shannon.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry for the interruption again. Just for number 10, which is on the last page, talks about trees for every 25 feet. In those narrow landscape beds, I'm not sure if that's going to be possible or not. But I, so it was just a point of clarification. But we can certainly achieve it where we can similarly. Okay.
All right, so Commissioner Rockwell, does any further changes to your motion?
Let's just start at number one, adjust all of them a little bit. No, I think we're good.
Okay, so we have, I think, well, while we have a motion and a second, we changed the motion a little bit. Commissioner Rockwell.
So, you know, I think it's, in terms of item number six, it does seem to me like the, the doorway, exiting the food shelf is really there for that circulation, and to have people exit where they enter, I think is a thoughtful idea, although I, there's a piece of me that would rather have entrance on Penn. I think that that could create confusion. So that's my rationale for striking six. You know, in terms of the having a, an entrance on Penn and Plymouth employing the building there, you know, this is a a really key intersection. There is a whole rethinking of this intersection with a lot of the North Point parking, for those who do drive across the street. And so I think pulling people to be able to enter and see that entrance on their approach on foot is really important. And I think that building our city to really facilitate and encourage public transportation use is crucial, and that putting a doorway away from an obvious place, although I can see that there's a pathway there, but away from an obvious place on the corner on the street is just an illogical move in 2018.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Just like to echo those comments and just summarize by saying, it seems like the site plan is oriented much too much towards the automobile, not a much to pedestrians and the transit that is actually being built right now. It's hopefully wonderful service, and I support the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second to approve item G, the site plan review with some changes to the conditions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Liptipier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 11. Our next item for discussion is item 13. Staff is Ms. Orak.
And this is an application by U-Haul for the properties that they own at 4225 and 4251 Hiawatha Avenue. They occupy the entire frontage along Hiawatha Avenue between 42nd and 43rd Streets in South Minneapolis. Now, the site is zoned. I-1 is located in the industrial living overlay district. There are three applications before you tonight. The first is a conditional use permit for truck and trailer rental in the I-1 light industrial district, the primary or the principal use of the new building that would be constructed on site as self-service storage, that is a principal, or a permitted use, excuse me, in the I-1 district. However, the truck and trailer rental requires the conditional use permit. They have a conditional use permit also to increase the height of the building from four stories or 56 feet up to five stories, 65 feet, and then site plan review. And so just to walk you through the site, and staff is recommending denial of all three applications. The site plan review requires a significant amount of alternative compliance, and staff did not feel that allowing so much alternative compliance was the best decision for the project. We had continued this from two meetings ago. The applicant and I did meet to talk about revisions. They chose to move forward with what had originally been proposed. And so we are maintaining our recommendations of denial on all three applications. But just to orient everyone, this is 42nd and 43rd, so north is up on your, north is this way on your screen. This is the existing building that is on the site. It is a former service station building. I think this could be the crux of a lot of the problems. But we didn't get that far in the conversation, to be honest, during the continuance period. But maintaining this building is, is not allowing them to meet a lot of our standards, but this is the direction they want it to go. And so that's what we're going to talk about. So that is that existing building that's on the site. The new building then sits somewhat in the middle, which is problematic for most of our site plan review standards, talking about putting parking to the side or the rear, having windows, materials, all of those things. And then the areas on the sides of the building are all for parking, maneuvering, or storage of the truck and trailer rental vehicles that would sit on the site. As you can see in the site plan review standards, there's over 20 items that they don't meet from building placement, visual interest, windows, pet access, vehicle access, most of the general landscaping and screening, parking and loading landscaping and screening standards, and then crime prevention. And again, because so much of the site needed alternative compliance, or so many of our standards needed alternative compliance, or exceptions, I should say, we did not feel that we could support this application, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. So please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Christopher Bowman with U-Haul Company of Minnesota. I'm the president. I reside at 9758 198 Street West in Lakeville, Minnesota. So today I come before you. The little building, I would, I'd agree with Hillary, is part of the problem, is building placement. When the CEO, when we originally purchased the property, he was quite enamored with the little service station. As U-Haul, if you may or may not know the history of U-Haul, we started with our business in service stations across the country. Those were the first U-Haul locations that served the general public. And when he saw this old service station, he wanted to bring it back to what it was back then, and kind of a nod to U-Haul's history, and also a little bit of nod to the history of Hiawatha. We had originally planned to just reuse the building as is, and we determined that in fitting with the recent developments in the area, that it probably better to do a new storage building. So we came to that. The reason we purchased this property in the beginning is because our truck and trailer share across the city is severely lacking. Our location on Nicolet Avenue is .43 acres and does the most transactions in the entire Upper Midwest. Not even close. Like, there's not even a close second to this one and the amount of transactions it does. And that's primarily because we're completely underserved, the amount of population. For example, another metro Milwaukee, you're going to be about 13 U-Haul centers and 30 U-Haul neighborhood dealers. The city of Phoenix, Arizona, there's 23 U-Haul centers and 117 U-Haul dealers. In the city of Minneapolis, we have one U-Haul center. The building design standards really conflict with our 73 years of experience on laying out parking lots. Now, we've gone through, I mean, we own thousands of locations across the country, and we've made our fair share of mistakes, and our CEO won't let us repeat them again. And the reason why we wanted to keep the service station and most of the U-move, as we call it on the old gas station side, is because we want the self-storage, load and unload, isolated away from those. Whenever we have combined the U-move and the self-storage, load and unload, it's chaos. You got people backing up on one, you have people walking to their equipment on the other part. It, it's a means to isolate. And it comes down to safety. We don't want everything happening just at one end. Since this is a narrow property, everything would be consolidated to a very small amount of square footage on just that south side. If we were to move the building to the corner, it just won't work for us. One, it doesn't work because the CEO really wants to keep that little gas station. And two, it's just not conducive with our, the way we operate. We know safety, we know what works, but we doesn't, what doesn't work. And Joe Shaw, our CEO, couldn't burden the general manager of the location with the site that he knows that will not operate properly if we followed most of the design standards. And the big one is building placement. As far as all the other ones, visual interest, I can fix that, both of them. Windows, I can fix that, both of them. Pedestrian access, we could definitely sharpen our pencil on that one. General landscaping and screening, I can fix all of those. I can pick that. And then crime prevention through environmental design, some of that will get fixed with the landscaping, and the other parts of it we can overcome with just straight up technology. Our facility is used by far, the best cameras, sensors, and, you know, there's, the location has, is active most of the time. So the biggest problem we have is we do not have enough locations in the city of Minneapolis. It's, it's come to a head, as they say, and we don't know where else we would go in the city. We bought the property, we own it. If you guys deem that it's just not going to work out, that's fine. We'll just, our plan is just to use the building as is. I guess that's where I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. And commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Questions? Commissioner Kogil.
So you, as, as far as building placement, the, the two reasons you listed as why you couldn't put it on the corner, the CEO doesn't want to get rid of the little service station?
Yeah, it's, I mean, in the end, it's his building. He really wants to keep it. He had a personal hand in making sure all those. He even contacted Mobile One to make sure we could still use the Pegasus horse. And of course, they were happy that we could reuse that. I mean, the family that owned the service station has the original Pegasus horse from it, and we can use that. I mean, there's a lot of different history things that they'll bring, bring into it, and that's what he really wanted on it. The other thing is to isolate the U-move from the self, from the load and unload. We just don't want it all on one side. In fact, it's so much a deal to Joe and to U-Haul is if we can't isolate it, we'll just use the property as is, and then that's what it is, because we're not going to put people in risk, we're not going to burden a manager with a poor location. In the end, it'll, it's just something we can do.
Okay, well, I guess my one other question then. So on the, is it a safety issue, that, that second issue, or is it just that it's a burden to the manager?
It's both. It's definitely a safety issue. I mean, can you imagine people sharing all their, oh, sorry, I talked with my head. All the equipment going on on the one side, and then you got your self-storage on the other side where people are actually backing up to the facility. If you have all those people going in to buy boxes, do their truck share, trailer share, all that stuff, you're going to be crossing paths. And you got big trucks that are backing up and not going to be able to see people as well as they could. That's why we want to isolate it from one side to the other.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit as well, because the five-story building seems kind of, you know, at first glance, kind of arbitrarily placed. So if you could talk a little about why it's not closer to the little building, or, you know, in terms of, why is it exactly where it is? And it looks like there's a proportion of space on each side, and how each of those accommodates those two distinct needs you were talking about?
Yeah. So originally, we didn't utilize the south parcel. We had to redo our plans again because the, the city, the state, and whatnot would not let us keep our curb cuts, since it was a redevelopment. So actually, that bigger building was scooted closer to the other building, and we weren't gonna, we didn't know what we were going to use the south parcel for at the time. But ever since that, the curb cuts got closed off, well, now we have to have an entrance into the, on the south side to get to the storage, because there's no longer a curb cut to feed that. And on the other side, that would serve the U-move. The reason why we, I mean, basically on the, the building's kind of positioned so that we have turning radius for the trucks to back in and out on the south side. On the north side, we have shunting lanes that come off the north face of the, the building, and that's just where we line the trucks up before they get.
And how many loading dock spaces are we talking about? It's, it's hard to tell on the copies here because they're really, really light, if whether they're parking spaces or loading dock, or how that all?
There's two internal, and I believe seven on the outside.
So if I'm a person who's renting a self-storage thing, I would be on the south side of the building? And I pull in from the south and do all my turning radius stuff and hopefully not hit another truck, and then unload my crap and be gone?
Yep.
And if I was moving, I would enter from the north side and rent a truck or boxes or whatever, and then leave?
Yep. It just, as you can see, it kind of just isolates it. It keeps people safe. I mean, because there's going to be more activity going on at the north side compared to the south side, but the south side has the element of danger, if you want to call it, because people are going to be backing up.
Commissioner Swayze.
Thank you. Not so much a question maybe, but a comment. I think I heard you say, going through those, the list of the things that require alternative compliance that staff has identified, it sounds like most of those you say you can fix.
Yeah, most of them are just placing more windows.
And I guess my, my, my thinking on it is that this, it sounds like there was an opportunity with the continuance to work those things out. And then tonight, perhaps all of that And then tonight, perhaps all of that could have been resolved and we would have maybe just been talking about the building placement. It's hard to go with all those things that require alternative compliance. And, and while I certainly believe you and I, I frankly would like to approve your project, but, and you say, well, we can fix them, but if, if that had been hammered out ahead of time, we would have known how those things would have gotten fixed and we would have had an opportunity to pass on those. And I feel like an opportunity was lost during that continuance time to, to make progress on those.
Basically, we were told that building placement was the issue and why bother if you don't fix the building placement? So why spend more money and more time? And, I mean, we can do all this, they were actually pretty much done with it. And the CEO said, stop, we, if they're not going to work with us on building placement, why bother? Now go, you can, we can fix all these. These are, if you read them through, they're pretty easy to repair or fix.
Right.
I mean, throwing windows, it's just, we were told basically the building placement was the issue and why bother if, if not?
Sure, well, maybe just for the fut, I mean, as the group that has to approve it.
I understand where you're coming from and, uh, you know, if it was up to me, it probably would have been done like that, but I, I don't have all the say in the world.
Understood, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just want to echo, uh, Commissioner Sweetsie's comments that I would have liked to see that this is a substantial amount of things that need variance and I'd like to see how you would have done that. I'm, I'm not sure if I would have approved it, but I mean, it's, I think that would have helped your argument a lot here.
Yeah.
Any further questions for the applicant? And if there are none, can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Commissioner Liffke here.
I have a question for staff. Um, so Hillary, enlighten me a little bit. So if they, um, were not doing anything with that one, like if they tore down the one-story building, would we still be having a, like, what's the, what's the deal with the one-story building? Like, if that were gone and it was just parking lot, would, what would we, would it affect us at all or is it the fact that they're keeping it that's a problem or what's the hangup with that little building?
I think keeping the building created other issues with, for instance, the layout of the parking lot where they put the specific loading area for the trucks. I'm going to pull out a better site plan that shows you that layout. I apologize, I didn't have it. But it also would have provided an opportunity to talk through maybe where the new building did get placed, because perhaps it could have been closer, you know, to the corner or whatnot. Um, I don't know if you can see those. Is it on your screen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So in this layout, there's a couple of spaces here, there's spaces here, there's spaces here. This is where they have the truck staging area, if you will, for the trucks that get, rented. And then there's parking along the perimeter here and then these are your parking and loading spaces. So there's just, kind of the layout of the whole site is just jointed. Um, and you could have probably laid the parking out differently or better and maybe the trucks could have been stored somewhere else. I don't know, but because this couldn't move, everything else was dictated by that.
It sounds like the applicant's saying that the percentage of, let's just say, the ratio of, you know, uses on either side of this building is, is pretty set, but if, but correct me if I'm hearing you incorrectly, but if that building wasn't there, their building could have been that much bigger and that would have alleviated that much surface parking? Is that what, that what one thing you're possibly saying could have happened? Or are you just saying they could have shifted one way or the other, but it would be the same footprint?
It would have given them a clean slate. I don't know what they would have done had they, had they redesigned the site without that there, but it would have given them an entire city block to work with. And instead, this kind of dictated drive aisles and whatnot, given where it was placed.
And then I had another question related to the I-1, because it's, in my own life, uh, it seems like I tend to rent tools and stuff somewhere along this same stretch of road, not too far from here. So is it just?
All kinds of rental businesses up and down Hiawatha.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, like, where does this fit into that framework and, and what exactly is it that's triggering this to, to not, um, be allowed there versus other rental places? Are they just grandfathered in because they've been along Hiawatha so long? I, I don't know, I mean, maybe.
They might have a CUP. I mean, I, I don't know, I guess, not sure what the other rental places are zoned along Hiawatha, but.
What's that I'd ask in case, you know, but I know it's kind of, knowing other lots off the top of your head. Thanks, Hillary.
I have another question, Hillary. So the applicant referenced reusing the, the buildings as they are. Am I correct that establishing any sort of truck or trailer rental would still require a conditional use permit and even reuse of those existing buildings most likely would trigger some conditions related to landscaping and circulation and, and such?
This is the site plan that was sent to me during the continuance period if they were to maintain, just use the existing building, carve that up into several storage locker facilities, which was the original, which wasn't the original proposal and then became the proposal and then now isn't. But this, um, would not, they would not be allowed to do truck and trailer rental on this site without that CUP. So it was my understanding that if the new development happened, they were going to just do self-service storage, not have truck and trailer rental.
Okay.
And if they did, they would not be in compliance with zoning and so we would have to cite them and go through that whole process.
Okay, okay. Are there any further questions of staff? Since there's no one else here to speak, the public hearing is closed and commissioners, we have the three applications before us. Any further questions or would someone like to start off with a motion? Commissioner Kogil.
Uh, I move, uh, that we, um, deny the conditional use permit, uh, item A, to allow truck and trailer rental in the I-1 light industrial district.
Right. A motion and a second to deny item A, the conditional use permit for truck and trailer rental. Any discussion? More discussion? I'll just add that, you know, I, and I think the comments of the, uh, other commissioners really summarized this well. Basically, you know, we acknowledge that, uh, truck and trailer rental is allowed by conditional use in this location. However, just the amount of alternative compliance is, is especially a concern. And I think this is a very visible location. It's a fairly large site, um, and, you know, typically, uh, alternative compliance, especially a significant amount, has to do with, uh, site constraints that you usually would find on a smaller site or where you're, um, utilizing, uh, older buildings. So I think in this case, there is, um, an opportunity to come much closer to meeting those, uh, standards. Commissioner Liffke here.
Yeah, I, I concur. I, um, wish that more had been done during the continuance period to, so we wouldn't be faced with all, you know, so much of this on, on the spur of the moment. So it's unfortunate, I wish we, we could actually consider continuing it just to give them a chance to kind of get their act together and make something happen or not. But it, but given that that's where we're at now, it is what it is.
Right. And Commissioner Rockwell.
Also point out, you know, this is in, uh, kind of a light rail shed and well, this is a, you know, well, we need truck rental places, uh, and this is a place that I could hold that. I don't think that that releases one from the obligation to make it a pedestrian-friendly environment with the built environment. And because not only are people coming to this site for, uh, reasons of renting a truck or self-storage, but they're also walking through this area to get to places in their neighborhood and to get to the train. And, uh, you know, I think, I mean, I was side commenting to, to Commissioner Kogil, I live two blocks from the Nicolet location and, you know, it's a little chaotic, but because it's small and because it's got, uh, walkable retail right next to it and community space next to it, you know, it doesn't have that great, uh, an impact on the environment. You know, it, it could be designed better, but, but I think that's important and is possible to do.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman.
Aye.
Kogil.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Liffke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Next, item B, the conditional use permit for building height. Commissioner Rockwell?
Uh, I will move staff recommendation to deny conditional use permit to increase the height of the building.
And we have a second. So there's a motion and a second to deny item B, the conditional use permit for building height. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman.
Aye.
Kogil.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Liffke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, the site plan review. Commissioner Rockwell. A motion and a second to deny item C, the site plan review. Any discussion? Commissioner Liffke here.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I actually am hugely in favor of restoring that little service building. I think it's a nice little bit of history and I actually, in terms of the site itself, that's one part of it that I actually feel is kind of nostalgic and interesting and, and kind of adds to the history of the area in a, in a really interesting architectural way. So, in fact, I thought those panels would have been cool on the north side as well as the south side. So I don't know if future iterations of this site, um, what'll happen, but I would say that's the one piece that was, that was done really well. So I, I, I don't want to have this denial interpreted in any way to be due to that little one-story kind of gem.
All right. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to deny item C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman.
Aye.
Kogil.
Aye.
Cronzer.
Aye.
Liffke here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 13. So concludes our business for today. We have committee the hall on Thursday and we are adjourned.